Hi. Called the meeting back in order at 6:32. We met in executive session to discuss union and non-union labor negotiations. So if there's anybody here from, we'll begin with public input. Anybody here from the public that wants to talk about something that's not on the agenda? Seeing no public, I think that's probably a no. And we go to the student report. So we have Samantha Galvin with us tonight, class of 2020. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. So today I'm going to be starting with notable athletic matters. So we're kind of at an in-between right now with winter sports coming to a close and spring sports are going to be starting in about a month or so. So boys track, their winter track team just won COWs and girls came in fourth for that. Girls basketball beat Masco 56 to 45, which is a really unexpected win. And boys basketball also beat Masco. So basketball's been doing really well lately. Boys hockey has to beat Bishop Fenwick on Wednesday to win their COW league. And more and more seniors have been committing to colleges for sports with Joey from Martino committing to Central Connecticut State University for baseball and Greg Dimitri committing to Bridgewater State for football. Girls hockey will also be attending the D1 tournament and they're ranked eighth currently. Wrestling also won the COW. Girls swim team tied for eighth place overall in sectionals, which is the highest they've ever finished to date. And they came in second in the COWs and boys came in fifth. And then there's a number of girls moving on to compete at the state meet. Christina Valenti, Ali Grabar, Brianna Saunders, Correa, Melanie Pfeffer, Nicole Steinmeier, and Maddie Koenig are all moving on to compete at the state meet. Moving on to notable matters in the art. Notorious just won the ICHS A quarterfinals at the Galvin Middle School in Wakefield on Saturday night. They were one of two teams to move on to the semifinals where they'll compete at Worcester. And there was a total of 10 teams competing. Last year, there was a total of eight with three moving on, so it was even more competitive and they still did just as well. They won an award for best choreography and they were only 15 points behind the leading team, so they were really close to winning it. I actually went and saw them and they're absolutely amazing. Their synergy is so well between the people who do solos and the background people singing. It's just amazing how well their voices all blend together and it was really cool that I got to see it. Moving on to academic matters, registering for AP exams and practice exams are starting. And course selection is also starting. The seniors are selecting their, or the juniors who are going to be seniors next year are selecting their courses this week. And then sophomores will be starting next week and then freshmen a little bit after that. People are continuing to commit to colleges in the senior class. And student council is selling cupcakes for Valentine's Day during Power Block this week. Last weekend, so the last weekend in January into the beginning of February, a group of 14 students got to go to Harvard Model United Nations, which I was one of the students who got to go to that. And I talked about it at a previous meeting and it was super fun. I think we'll be trying to go every single year because it's one of the best Model UN conferences. There was, I think, over 4,000 people from all over the world going to attend. And for anyone interested in going to trade, going into the trades, there's going to be a meeting hosted by the Columbia Management Company this Friday that they can go see. And senior students received updated information on their class rank in the mail today, which dictated their unweighted and weighted GPA. Katie Greer is also coming to the school to speak on Wednesday about cybersecurity. And High Tech Hornets placed at the NADED qualifiers with their robotic design. For our example of student work, I brought in two different ceramics projects. So this is a fired piece, that's why it's shiny. And so this is glazed and it's kind of like powdery right now if you touch it, but when you put it in the kiln, it gets heated to a high enough temperature that it'll come out shiny like this. And then it's waterproof when it's like this. And so the assignment was to do a series of three coil pots this size. And a coil pot is basically, you make a base in the shape of a circle and then you roll out almost like little, like rolling pins, but without the ends. And you wrap it around and you build up vertically. And then you shape it using your hands instead of like a wheel. And it's how the ancient Greeks used to make all their pottery. And then, so after we did the series of three small ones, we moved on to do a bigger one. And I noticed that the shape of a lot of the pots was kind of similar to the shape of Ursula, the Disney character. So I decided to make Ursula with my pot. And I thought it was really cool because with the three little pots, it was kind of like learning how to build it. And it was a lot more difficult than anything we had ever built because you really had to get the shape even. And without being on the wheel, it's really hard to get all of the surfaces even. And then on the bigger coil pot, we were able to kind of use more of our creativity by making it different designs. People kind of went a bunch of different ways. Someone made Winnie the Pooh's honey pot, which was really cool. And using the design of the coils, because they're kind of like swirly shapes, some people made almost like baskets with them. So it was really cool to use the coils as almost like an element within the pot. Yeah. I'm going to pass around this one, but not this one because this one gets like powder everywhere.
Well, thank you. Questions, comments?
The Model UN, can you give a little bit more information about that?
Yeah.
Who was your country again?
So.
And what did you do?
We were Austria and my committee that I was specifically in was the Economic and Financial Committee. And I, we focused on the economics of climate change. So basically as Austria, Austria's a more liberal country, so we were kind of pushing for low carbon emissions, a cap and trade program on the carbon. Nobody from North Reading won an award through H-Mun, but I got nominated for, within my committee for best speaker. So there's like superlatives within each committee sometimes. And basically everyone got a different committee. So two of my friends were doing Israeli-Palestinian conflict, but we were all representing Austria from our school. So you had to be well-versed in what Austria would do if they were the ones in the UN.
Interesting.
I'll say that the Ursula pot is one of the coolest things I've ever seen.
Thank you.
It really is. It's impressive. It's cool.
Thank you.
So do you know where you're going to college yet?
No. I hear back really late from most of my schools. Four of my schools don't tell me until April 1st. And I have to commit by May 1st. So April's going to be a month of going to a lot of colleges to figure out which ones.
Do I want to ask what the four are? What do you mean?
Um.
Are you sharing or not? You don't have to. You don't have to, I'm asking.
I'll share. The four that I'm waiting the latest for are Tufts, B.C., Amherst, and Boden.
Well, as a double eagle, you know I have my preference, though. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll just say I was so excited to bring the ceramic because most of the times when I see it's paper, they're getting passed around, or sometimes visuals. But to see some real student artwork, I thought was really great. And I get to observe that class all the time and it's great to see sort of the finished products. It's really neat. And that's got to be hard, those little, the tentacles.
Oh, this is so. To put these on, I had to get like a wooden board and I had to stick them to here, let it dry, kind of in this curved shape. And then I had to make sure that it didn't dry enough, that it would permanently stick, so that way I could bend them this way. So working with clay at first is very difficult. There's definitely a learning curve because the moisture is really important. So you have to make sure it's not too dry and it's not too wet, that it's still sturdy. Because actually, the first version of my Ursula pot that I made, when I started making it, I used too much water and it was too heavy that it kind of caved in on itself. So that's one of the things you have to be careful of.
Interesting.
Good job.
Great job. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Excellent work.
As you know, you do not have to stay.
Although you are welcome.
You are welcome. Okay. So we have some visitors here tonight. We have representatives of the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational High School. And I think we have Judy Diamond, I don't want to say it wrong, Jay Piccone, and Ms. Carla Scuzzarella. Is that all? And who else? Who am I missing?
Dave DeBarry.
Oh, Dave as well. Well, welcome and thank you guys. So you want to present on how things are going and whatever else you need.
... So one year, one year visit. Can't believe how quickly we're here again. And I'm sure the biggest concern and question people have is moving forward with our new school project. And today was a very exciting day for us because we had the opportunity to have our kickoff event with the MSBA. And they toured our school. So it's real. It's close. It's getting here. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dave DeBarry, who is our superintendent. And he can, you know, update all of you as to where we are right now. And then certainly any financial questions, we have our expert, Mr. Piccone, who is our finance director. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to them.
All right. Thanks again. So as Judy mentioned, we're starting to, you know, make this project seem real. We were able to make it through the feasibility portion and be accepted, rather, into the feasibility stage. We contracted with our architect and so we now start the process of designing the school. And, you know, we still have to go through some of the options, which would be determining whether we can renovate, do a renovation and addition, or if we would need a whole new building. So that's the process we're at right now. It's very exciting. I think the staff's excited, the kids are excited, even though the ones that are there won't be there still when there's a new school. But I know a lot of them have siblings and hopefully look forward to someday having children of their own coming. With that, what we do doesn't stop until the building hopefully is erected. So we're constantly looking at the current programs we have and the current initiatives. Last year when I was here, I talked a little bit about our Saturday program. And I wanted to update you again, that is up and running. For anybody who wasn't here last year, what we do is we offer vocational exploratory courses on Saturdays to students from the 12 districts that don't go to Northeast. So a lot of students, when they're coming up to graduation and realize they may not be going to college, or they may have an interest area, we allow them to come into Northeast for free. It's from a grant, a Cummings grant that Dr. Scuzzarella was able to acquire. And they go through different shops throughout the schools. So they can explore multiple shops, or if there's one or two shops they're really interested in, they can stay in those shops for the entire eight weeks. At the end of those eight weeks, they work with one of our career counselors and we help direct them to a career path or a place to further their education. So that's been a great program. It's been exciting. It's been a way to, you know, allow students to have a great education at someplace like North Reading High School, but also explore some vocational opportunities. This year, we're probably going to look at some scholarships for our night school. We also offer night school courses for all the residents in our community. Again, you know, most of the trades are represented there, metal fabrication, welding, plumbing, all the ones that I know people are looking at right now. Robotics, so we are in our third year of robotics. That program is growing. It's really amazing. Last year, right around this time, they had built an automated hot dog cooking device where it would actually pick up the hot dog, cook the hot dog, you know, put it into a bun. And, you know, when we went and we were touring and we ate the hot dogs and they were great, probably one of the nicest things I've heard in my career was one of the students said, "I'm so disappointed we have summer vacation because we're going to start working on having the automation machine put the condiments on it. Now we have to wait till September to get back here." And yeah, and he was serious. So that's been a great program. We're looking into the future for the new school at some newer programs, medical assisting, biotechnology and marketing. And there is a programs that we're exploring right now, what the job market will be like. And we're working with mass hiring, some of the local labor boards, to see if those are feasible career paths. And if so, those are ones that we'd like to look to implement in the future. So it's going great. If anyone has any questions, I, you know, love to take them or feel free to email me. But we really appreciate all your support and the fact that you invited us over here and really want to listen to what we're doing means a lot to us. So I thank you.
Questions, anyone? I have a few. I always do. So now the Saturday program last year, I thought was really interesting. So I'm a little bit, I'm curious. Curious, first of all, do you have any flyers on that still or can you?
We do. I can get sent some over tomorrow.
Yeah, just because I'd love to post it, you know, again. And how many, how many students did that last year? Was it pretty well attended?
Yeah, last year, by the end, we had 80 students. I'm pretty sure that the director actually came over to North Reading High School last week and met with the guidance counselors. So yeah, so we invite all of the guidance counselors over for breakfast. And then we also invite ourselves over if somebody wants more information. And I'm pretty sure we came over here as well.
Okay. And that starts at high school, nine through 12, then? And then, and just especially for some of the newer members, and to clarify for me, you guys are located, are you guys right next to Wakefield High School?
We're right up the hill.
Right up the hill from the Wakefield.
Yep. So we're right on the line of Braycott Reservation.
Yeah. And if you have to build a new, if you end up having to build a new building, do you have the space right there to do it?
Yep. North, south, and east, we have space. There's only one area and that's where Braycott begins, that we don't own a significant amount of land that we could build on.
And in terms of the budgeting, so two questions. Number one is, do you have any idea what fiscal year like we would end up having to do? Just because in finance planning, we always talk about like, well, we know eventually we're going to have to this type of.
Right, right, right. Yeah. Pass that over to Jay.
So because we were able to put money aside for the feasibility study, we talked about we won't have to come back to the cities and towns for an additional appropriation of funds for calendar year 2022, which would be fiscal year 2023, is what we, when we be looking for more, more funding.
Okay. And I think, and if I'm correct, every, you have to get the approval of every district, correct?
Correct.
I mean, are you well on your way for that? I mean, has that all happened already or where, how is that going?
Oh, no. We're at the very beginning stages of that. So we don't even actually have, until the feasibility study is done.
You can't get a vote yet.
Exactly. We don't have a number in mind right now. So until we have that, we can't, we won't be able to get those votes.
Is the process comparable to what a district would go through? And then once the design has been approved by the state and then you go to your constituent towns, once you have a number?
Yep. That's pretty much exactly how it's going to work.
Who makes the decision at the town level? How does that process work?
So we would need a unanimous vote from each one of the towns in order for this to go forward.
A vote from?
Is it the school committee?
The committee or the select board or the?
Is there a town meeting?
Yeah, it's actually a town meeting.
Town meeting?
Yes.
That must be daunting.
And the reimbursement rate is, I think they said, were you able to secure the reimbursement rate from old? I mean, what's the reimbursement rate on this project?
So the reimbursement rate right now is, it's in legislation. We're working to get it carried forward. So right now, it's not set yet.
Okay.
But we're working towards getting that old reimbursement rate that we referred to on previous meetings reinstated.
About 79 or something?
Yeah, 71.84%.
We do have our architect company now, which, you know, that was huge. I was part of the decision, as it was David J., meeting with the MSBA. And we were lucky because we got the architect that we wanted. And as you know, going through that process, that's not always the case.
Oh, we love architects in North Reading.
It's a company, DRA, and they're from the South Shore. Where are they from?
I believe they are from the South Shore.
From the South Shore.
Yes.
And they have vocational experience, which was key to us because a big difference between an academic high school and a vocational high school, as you can well imagine. So we definitely had the feeling that the company that we wanted wasn't the company that they wanted. But we were able to argue our opinion successfully and therefore we were able to get it and we're very excited about that.
Great. Go ahead.
Out of curiosity, Richard asked, once you get approval from the state saying, okay, yeah, we're going to grant you X, Y, and Z. I know from North Reading, you had 120 days, but that was one town. You have multiple towns. Do they still limit you to 120 days to get all of the towns to agree?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer to that, but I can, I can certainly look into it. And because again, we're at the very beginning stages of this. It's a learning experience for all of us because, you know, we've, this is our first new building project, so. But yeah, no, I can certainly provide you with that information.
Yeah. That's a good question, a good, good thing to think about because with town meetings, they're only twice a year and every town's probably different. So good. One other thing, like I know last year you talked about, there's a big waiting list right now. And just to refresh our memories, I mean, how many students can you help right now? And what's the goal that you can help with the, when you get the new building completed?
So that's an answer that MSBA won't give us yet.
Okay.
So we actually have to give them three alternatives for enrollment. One would be a current enrollment, what it would cost to build a building just for that. The second number would be the highest number, which would be 1,722, which matches up with the waitlist. So they took how many students applied, how many remained on the waitlist, and this is how many they need. They're actually asking now for a third number, somewhere in the middle. So they want us to be able to share with communities, hey, this is what we'd like, you know, this is what, you know, you may be able to afford and, you know, this is somewhere in the middle and how can we get to that? So this is something brand new for MSBA. It kind of threw us off a little bit, but we're working with them. And, you know, I guess if it gives everybody, you know, more of a selection process, it's, it'll be best in the end, but we don't know yet.
Right. And so what's your current enrollment right now?
We're about 1,270.
Okay.
Yeah.
So your middle number's going to come in about 1,721?
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Well, I mean, I think, we don't have a lot of students that go there, I don't think, but we really support the vocational school and it's great that you guys are so close. So thank you. We know how hard, well, Janine knows how hard it is to do a building project done. So thank you guys for coming. And as we said, Ms. Galvin, you are welcome to stay. We're talking about a turkey farm purchase next, if you'd like to hear that, or you can feel free to.
We had a very long day today.
So are you?
We had a meeting at the school and we had meetings tonight. I'd like to add one thing that we do at the school is we do a project for cities and towns in our district. And we try to do as many as we can and possible in the school year. One of the ones that we do have coming up soon is in March will be for North Reading. And we take pride in that. So, you know, it's a, it's a great opportunity for our cities and towns to call us and ask us for help. And I hope that word gets out because we try our best to do that. So, and I want to thank you all again for having us again this year. We look forward to it. Not every school committee invites us and I think that's too bad because we feel like we have a great relationship with North Reading and would like to see more of that with other schools. So thank you again. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And please follow us anytime if you have any questions. Welcome aboard.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So moving on. So the next one is, we're going to discuss, as everybody's probably heard, the town of North Reading is considering purchasing 14 Concord Street. It came up at the finance planning team meeting as well. And everybody may be wondering why on earth we're talking about this right now. I would just, I would just add that the reason, reason for the finance planning team meeting is because as elected officials, we have a responsibility to help manage the funds that are used and trying to determine, you know, trying to determine what, what the greatest needs are in the town. And the finance planning team is where the select board, the school committee, finance committee come together to discuss that. And so I think the select board wants thoughts from us as well about what to do when we're talking about using, you know, more than a million dollars of town funds in order to, you know, purchase an asset. You know, that million dollars can go to a lot of different things. You know, we all know that's a lot of needs and so I think they really, they genuinely want to hear our opinion about something like this. And so I just thought it was worth having a few minute discussion. They're discussing it right now. I think they were supposed to start about 7:30 and so I'm actually going to text, we'll take a quick break after this and whatever our thoughts are, I'm going to text over to the town administrator because he wanted the school committee's thoughts on this. We don't have to take an official vote, but, you know, if I, if I may kind of just very quickly walk through what is being discussed and again, if people want to give their thoughts, they asked the finance planning team for our votes on, our thoughts on what to do. So right now, and Patrick or Michael or Janine can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but if you look at the map that was given, Lot 14 is what is, well, it's actually, it's Lot 15, but it's, it's 14 Concord Street. It says 14 on the, on the map there. That the town has a right of first refusal on because it was agricultural land and so they paid lower taxes for a number of years. So the town has the right of first refusal to purchase this property. Lots 12 and 4 are the, Lot 4 is the property that you probably most think about as a turkey farm. That's where the actual store is right now. That is not the parcel they're talking about. Lot 12 is a blue building next to it. I actually walked the land this morning because I had nothing else to do, so I walked the land just to kind of see it. So the blue building is Lot 12. And then 14 has 113 feet of frontage. It's right after the, the, the last industrial, the Bob, Bobcat building. And before the blue building is just woods right now. So the purchase price for 14 would be 1.1 million. The other two lots are not, they are for sale, but they're, the town does not have a right of first refusal for them. They may come up if we, if the town decides to buy 14. 12 and 4 may be options that could be purchased as well. Those would each be 450,000 so that it would be a total of $2 million if all three lots are purchased. And basically at this point in time, the town has 120 days to decide whether or not they want to buy it. They don't have to decide what it's going to be used for, but it's 1.1 million dollars. If they don't use it, you know, there's another buyer already there. Just to note, Lot 20 is an industrial lot. And I think Lot 12 or 14, or the next lots over are going to be residential. So yeah, Lot 14 is officially residential as well. So it's right on that, that border. So in the future, if sewers were to come down there, it could theoretically be turned into industrial land very easily because it's contiguous to the, the current industrial land. And yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's the general idea here is they're just trying to figure out not what to do. I think, well, I don't think there's 100% consensus on, on it. I think the general idea is that part of the Pulte funds would be used to purchase the land. So there is, you know, 19 and a half million dollars sitting in a bank account. Right now, there's interest being earned on that, you know, small amount of interest, which obviously if you use a part of it, you wouldn't get interest on that. You would lose, you know, a little bit of real estate taxes, but there's probably four, five, six different ideas that I've already heard from different people about what the land could go towards. And so, yeah, so I mean, I think they would just like our opinion on things and it was a really tight schedule. We, they're having the meeting tonight and I don't know, I don't know what other people's thoughts are, but wanted to open it up. Or do you want me to kind of tell you what the select board's thoughts are or anything like that first?
Well, I guess I'm a little, I guess I'm wondering what those ideas are that they have in mind for using it. I mean, that's really the big question. Are we buying this in reserve or are we buying it with some ideas in mind?
Well, I mean, right now, we're buying it in reserve because a 14-acre parcel of land has not come up for sale very often in North Reading. And there's been discussion about, you know, senior housing. There's been discussion about affordable housing. There's been discussion about, you know, other buildings that we need to build, rec centers and everything else. And so right now, I don't think, there's no way that they'll ever get an agreement on what to do with that land right now. But what I can say is the Lot 14 itself can be subdivided into seven buildable lots. And so a buildable lot in North Reading is fairly valuable and so my thought in the finance planning team was, if we think we might need that land for something, if sewers are gonna come down there and that would make it even more valuable, we can keep twenty million dollars in a bank account, or we can keep eighteen or nineteen million dollars in a bank account and have a property worth one or two million dollars. And if in three years, we can't come up with an idea what we're going to do with it, it can be sold and I think it's almost certain that you'll get the money back, plus probably more than that. And so, for me, if there's, whereas in, in three years, if you decide you want to do something with it, trying to find a parcel that's fourteen acres is not gonna be easy to do. So for me, my opinion was, it makes great sense to purchase something like this because there are a lot of needs that would, would require fourteen acres of land. And, you know, like I said, you don't, you don't get that opportunity very often. You can always go back two years from now and undo it, sell it, you know, parcel it off. The town would also then have a little bit of control over what it becomes and what it, who it does go to as well, and so there would be some control over that. You know, Mr. O'Leary kept saying in the finance planning team meeting that this is really a gateway, you know, to North Reading because it's, you know, it's right on that industrial residential line. And if we do decide, it's gonna be a lot of debates in the next few years about sewers and, you know, what the Pulte money's gonna go to, go towards. And so, I think just having the land there to use at a very affordable rate for fourteen acres of land, you know, is a tremendous benefit for the town. And, again, it can always be sold off and I don't think it's something where, you know, you don't know if you're gonna get the money back or not. I think for seven buildable lots in that location, I think it's fairly certain that you'll be able to get that money back, so.
Assuming that they decide to purchase this?
Yep.
Do you know for certain that they're planning on using some, most, or all of, or paying for some, most, or all of it using that money that's set aside?
In finance planning, they said, I, I think it's fairly unanimous that it's not gonna be any sort of debt service. And so, I mean, and one thing I had said was like, I wouldn't support taking out, taking out a loan and paying interest on that loan when you have twenty million dollars sitting there. And so, I, I think everybody was in agreement for that. There was a few people, I guess, that were questioning whether or not some of, some free cash could be, should be used instead of Pulte money. But I think the general consensus was, and what I had said was like, I think the Pulte money should be used because if nothing else, the Pulte money is restricted funds, so it has to be limited in what you can buy with it. Whereas free cash can be used for anything, so if you can, if it's, if it's something that you can use it for, why wouldn't you use it when you could rather than using restricted funds? And so, I, I think the general consensus would be, and what, and what I had said to them was, assuming it was using the Pulte funds that were sitting there, I would support that. I wouldn't support debt service on it because I, I think that's a waste when you don't know what you're gonna be using it for, to be paying a percentage on it.
I'd say, knowing far less about it than you, not having been in those meetings, but, but, um, if, if there aren't other uses for that money, if, if us buying this and like you said, at worst, holding it for a few years, not knowing what to do and then maybe having to resell it as a worst-case scenario, if we're not penalized for having that money tied up, if it doesn't keep us from other things, then I don't see any reason why I'd be against it. I think that it makes perfect sense.
I think, I think the negative right now would be, you couldn't use it for something else, like another business could buy it and be paying real estate taxes on it. You know, and so you'd, you'd take a little bit of real estate tax money off the books for however long you're not using it. Similarly, if you take a million dollars out of an account that's earning...
Interest loss.
One and a half or two percent interest, you're losing the one and a half or two percent interest. And so...
Less than one, it's less than one and a half, I bet.
Yeah. And, and that's, and that's really the downside of it right now, I think.
Buying treasuries, right? They're buying T-bills?
Yeah, they're, I, I don't know what they're buying exactly, but, yeah, but they're buying a safe, very low-interest, you know, return value right now. And so, yeah, I think, I think that's the big negative of it, would be what else it could be, but with that being said, if they get sewers there, maybe that's a large parcel of land that maybe could attract a bigger business in the future. You know, and so, e- even if you just held it for a couple of years and then the town decides it does want to go that route, maybe there's, like, one person said, well, what if a hotel goes in? I mean, it's, it's a large parcel of land and so, I don't know, I mean, I think, there's no way we're gonna get consensus, that people are gonna get consensus on a hundred, in a hundred and twenty days. But the reality is the Pulte money is supposed to go to, go to improve the town overall. Part of that's gonna be financial, a part of it will require land eventually. Whether you're building, you know, a community center, whether you're building affordable housing, whether you're building a fire station, whatever you end up building, you'd probably need land eventually. And so this would be securing a potential spot for something in the future, so. Yeah. Yeah, we don't have to go more and more into it. I mean, I just thought, you know, Mr. Gilberto and the select board would like to, you know, have thoughts from the people elected to manage the money. And so if people are in favor of that, there's gonna, they're, assuming that they want to move forward with it, there'll end up being a special town meeting because there's no town meeting scheduled within the requisite time period. So they'll have to tie, have a town meeting where there'll be an actual vote on it, so. Anyway, we don't have to vote on this, but, I don't know, I mean, it sounds like Chris kind of gives the thumbs up on this. I mean, Rich, Janine, Diana?
I don't have any objections. I mean, as the school committee, I guess I would only have a serious objection if we had an alternate use for the money. But as a, as a general, you know, way of managing the town's resources, I don't think it's a bad option.
Yeah. Oh, Janine already gave hers at the finance planning team. Yeah, I mean, in, in general, I think, like, like you mentioned, like, the school committee, I think what that twenty million dollars is used for i- is important in the future. And so this provides options for that where, you know, I would love to see that twenty million dollars, like, we got that twenty million dollars from, you know, the, the select board and other people, being able to sell land that wasn't being used and make something out of it. Tax revenue's coming on from that. Now, if we can use that money to further increase, you know, new revenue, new growth revenue would be great. And so I think this gives an opportunity to do that in the future, so. Great. Well, that's all I have if everybody's there. And you know what? I'm not even gonna break right now because they're not even starting until seven-thirty, I don't think, so. I will just text Mr. Gilberto afterwards because he was loving to hear it and if anybody wants to go over, the hearing is at seven-thirty.
I was gonna say, why do I have a feeling that hearing will go on for a while?
Yeah. I think, I, I think I'm gonna go over there. I mean, I will say, I personally put in my thoughts to them as well, so. Great. Thank you, everyone. The next is an update on the SEEM collaborative budget. Dr. Daley?
So included in your packet is the highlights document from SEEM collaborative. What I drew attention to, which I think is sort of the, the highlights of the document, would be, highlighted in pink there that we are a member district. We, we currently have two students there and you can see the, the projected, the FY twenty tuition, the FY twenty-one tuition. And on the back page is, tells you just, it just shows you a little bit of what we're able to save as being members of the SEEM collaborative. So, for our two students, if we were not members, the, it would be a hundred thirty-nine thousand and we are paying about eighty-eight, five sixty. So a cost avoidance for member districts for us is about fifty-one thousand dollars. So, obviously, the impacts are, the higher numbers there. You can look also, the number of students are much higher in some other districts and places. And I think it's important to note, too, that, you know, my role as assistant superintendent, I work with SEEM collaborative through monthly job-alike meetings. We've got a great team of bringing our member districts together to do all sorts of collaboration around curriculum instruction assessment. We have a job-alike that meets for special education. We have a job-alike that meets for, for digital learning leaders also, business leaders get together. So, and, and then the board is made up of the superintendents, so it really also serves multiple purposes. In addition, they offer tremendous services. We've used them for professional development. We've used them for some contracted services when we had the need for, let's say, an English, as a second language teacher. When we just had the need for one or two students, we were able to contract services. We've also been able to use some contractual services with them for some other mental health and, and other support providers. So, the collaborative's great. They're really been fantastic support and I've been to my first board meeting, but I was able to get all this information to bring here tonight, so. But you'd like to see the highlights document.
Questions? Comments? My first question is, what's, what's the cost of the membership?
It's five thousand, five hundred dollars. And they've stayed pretty, it has not gone up in over five years, five years.
So, why is it that some districts that are not members, I mean, there's districts that have thirty-five students going there and they're not a member district? I mean, are they, do they just not allow them in or, I mean, like, it just seems, if you're saving that much money, why would somebody not pay a membership if they have thirty-five students? I don't know.
Yeah, so they, I mean, I think it's, some of the membership, I think, is geographically driven.
Okay.
I believe there's, you know, twelve sending, you know, member districts, so I think they, they may have to apply to be a member of multiple. And, you know, there, it's a great organization. As you know, we also get, this, this is the tuition savings, what's kind of not shown here, is we are part of their transportation contract as well. So us being a member and there's a shared, we're part of their shared collaborative transportation contract. So we, we have students being transported outside of the district that other SEEM member districts, if those students are on the same van, that cost, there's a shared cost model there as well. So there's, there's additional savings and we've run some analysis over the years and we think that's, you know, a minimum of about another forty to fifty thousand dollars of, of annual savings, cost avoidance by, by sharing, you know, our transportation, you know, contract as well, so.
And the number of students is obviously low. I know, I know a few years ago, we hired a position to try to, you know, specifically focus on trying to keep more students in district. And, I mean, it's too consistent or have we, have we done, have we been able, have we seen?
Yeah.
I, I can't remember what the position was. I know it was like, was it elementary?
The elementary positions, yeah. Coordinator positions and then the elementary team chair position over the last couple of years. So, it's a little bit lower than maybe what it's been. I think we've been historically, you know, four to five students. We think we've had some students age out that were at SEEM and we also are a member of North Shore. And so we have, we have, you know, I think we have four students at North Shore. And there are other students that are attending other collaboratives based on the, you know, those needs. But, you know, certainly SEEM is always a collaborative that we, again, as Dr. Daley mentioned, have a very strong relationship with. And they're, you know, certainly someone that we turn to first when there are, are needs of students to see if we can fit within their programs. You know, right now, we happen to have two and I think it's just more of, we've had students that have been there, have kind of aged out over the last couple of years.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We don't need to vote on this either. We have the VISTA survey.
Sure. So I shared some information in the packet about the VISTA and the vocal surveys. These are Department of Ed surveys that have come out the last few years where they have collected information from districts. The VISTA survey is one that, you know, that we, we provided feedback and we've seen good outcomes from that feedback over the years. The vocal survey is, is a little bit different and that's the one that's tied, that the students are providing information. It's been a part of the MCAS for the last few years. And it's something that school committee traditionally has not voted to support. They, the school committee in North Reading has voted that students would not take this survey. And so I wanted to bring it forward to see what your thoughts were, but I, I thought it would also just be timely to share a little bit about what that data is and how it's used. And, you know, they, they are making decisions at the state based on some of the student feedback. Some of it's used to, to give us some feedback with our accountability. And so it's one of those points that I think, you know, we, we have not supported this in the past. But I think I just wanted to share with you again how it's being used and that, you know, so our, our students' voices are not a part of, of what's being shared in the, in the state. It is extra time, it is extra days on testing when they've just finished testing and I think that was what some of the objection has been in the past. And I can, I can honestly see both sides of the argument. I can certainly see that. But I, I know that this is something that we've kind of formally presented and so I would, you know, honestly, I would support a continuation of that. But I also, if someone wanted to go in a different direction, we could, we could make that decision. We do have to, thinking ahead as we're coming into the season of, of the assessment, we do have to make some decisions about when we're trying to set up the dates and the times and how much time is spent. And also some of the behind-the-scenes work to load the surveys. So, if we were to continue as in the past, the students would, would not take the vocal survey. If we were to do it differently this year, they would take it on the days with the, it would be students of grades four, five, eight, and ten. And there are forty items that would measure school climate. And it would have additional data that can be used at the school level and also provide feedback to the state, so.
Question?
So, Dr. Daley, it seems like, basically you're saying you're ambivalent, whether we change what we're doing or, or not, that there's value in, in... I assume you think there's value in us participating if we were to go that route?
There is value, but I, I also see the, the exhaustion argument where kids are doing a lot, schools are doing a lot, there's a lot of time spent on this. And I think it was certainly, I understand the reasons why the committee said we're not going to do this in the past, so.
So I guess my question is, does it, if, if we are to make a change, does it make more sense to plan it a year out rather than have that vote now to do it in, in, I guess it would be May, right?
Sure.
Where, where you, you know, where we can get a, get an understanding of what the impact is in the fall and then make a decision then with a little more consideration?
Sure.
I don't know what other people think, but it feels a little, with, especially with everything going on this year, that it might be a little bit, a bit much.
What's the time commitment for, for taking this?
It's, uh, it's, it's additional sessions, about fifteen minutes is what they say, so.
Like, the total will be fifteen minutes, or?
Yeah.
And what's the value proposition of doing this? What's the value?
Just, I mean, getting the, the data back about school climate and, and giving the, the feedback to the state about these, these various areas, so.
Now, the middle school has a climate survey later on, so we do our own...
We have other tools that we do as well.
Yep.
So.
Is there a consensus amongst staff as to whether or not this is a valuable takeaway from time on learning or disruption to...
There is not. We have not discussed it and it's been presented as just something we haven't done. There's not been, I have not personally heard one way or the other whether, whether there's an outcry. I, I think for the, if I had to guess, I would say staff are probably okay with the fact that we're done fifteen minutes earlier. I, I mean, it's, it's, it's less testing. The kids have just been through a lot. I think I can, I can see that as well. So, but I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, I, I gathered the information on what it is as we, you know, do our annual vote on it, so.
I appreciate, I appreciate you mentioning that as well, about what we've done in the past. I mean, I think, I think, I'll say, I'll say it wrong again, Mr. Papa Vasilio was very good in our, our discussion about academic calendar where he said, if there's an overriding reason to change what we do, what we've done before, we should, but if there's no overriding reason to change, you know, you know, then you'd probably stay with what's been done in the past. And so I think that's where I stand.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But, and everybody else?
Apparently I stand there.
So. I'm backing you in a corner there, Chris.
The, uh, so I, I guess, if, if we were to depart from doing this, is the idea then that we'd be able to ma, I mean, obviously, I guess I'm, I'm saying it, I'm answering it myself, but we'd be able to put those fifteen minutes to use in between testing and back to overturn to normal?
Yeah. So, when you say depart from doing it, you mean, continue to not...
Yeah, I'm sorry. I kind of said that backwards in my head as I, as I, as I work, go, thank you. I think you caught that and I was like...
Yeah, they just would, the students would not take the optional survey at the, at the end, you know? So it's just, it's just additional school culture data that we wouldn't, we would continue to not receive back.
Yeah.
I would be curious if you were to take it to the administrative council and get kind of like their feedback. Do they feel that an additional survey to find out the climate of the school would be needed or are they happy with the, the one that we take on our own? I would just be curious, not that I am pushing for it because obviously...
Sure. Yeah, I can say, I can say that there's been no, you know, I haven't heard from the, the administrative council that there is, is a loss, that this isn't done. But I, I think to, to Mr. McGowan's point, you know, it could be a question that I ask as a part of my entry, you know, is there a need for more data? And it might be a question to ask of parents, of students, of, of everyone, and then if there's a need for more data, then we could say, here's an opportunity that we're, that we're voting down each year. And I, I think, yeah, it may be premature to decide that right now, but maybe that's something we look at, you know, it could be a question that I ask in the future of all those stakeholders to see whether there's more. We might also hear, we're already doing X, Y, Z and why do we need to do this as well, so.
So that's done at the middle school, the current climate surveys, right?
There are, yeah.
I mean, when you look at this, it says fourth and fifth graders and, you know, I could speak from personal experience, I have a, a fifth grader.
Yep.
And they're gonna be surveyed on emotional safety, physical safety, cyber bullying, and I'm sure it's age-appropriate, but I don't know. It just seems like it's more appropriate for a middle school and high school level. So I'm, I'm not really a big fan, honestly.
Okay, so, rather than having a negative motion, why don't we have a motion and then we can vote either in favor of the motion or opposed? Because you could still vote against your own motion, I believe. So can I have a motion to approve? Is that how, is that how we should do it? I think.
A motion to...
I don't think we, I don't think we do a motion to reject it. I don't think we, I don't think we do a motion to reject it. If we do a motion to approve it and then we can vote yea or nay.
Do we have to?
Well, it says, it says vote.
We have to have a vote.
Do we need a vote on it or not?
If we don't, if we're not making a change.
Well, I, I think, I mean.
I follow my agenda.
I can't remember what we did last year exactly.
Yeah, I, I believe, I, I think what we're saying is just a motion to
Should we do a vote?
Continue to not participate in the, in the vocal survey.
I just wanted to vote no on something.
To reject.
Hey, we have a motion to continue our practice of not participating in the vocal survey.
I will make a motion to, once again this year, decline doing the vocal.
Survey.
Survey after the MCAS tests for grades four, five, eight and 10.
I will second.
Any more discussion? Hey, all those in favor of not, in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Unanimous. Thank you.
Could have voted no there, Scott.
Okay, school improvement plans. Dr. Daly?
Great. So this is something that had started prior to my coming on as superintendent. The principals have passing along their school improvement goal updates for mid-year updates. It's something that was being collected and then part of when I came on, we refined that and, and looked at it a little bit more here. It's also one of the committee's goals is to have this evaluation and, and, I'm sorry, this data at the mid-year point to look at it as well. As I mentioned before, part of my process of getting into school visits is to really start looking at our school improvement plans through a different lens, talking about alignment to NRPS 2021 and also to the individual goals of the administrators. And so that's really something that we're working on there. So I, I just want to be clear though, and I've made it very clear to the administrators, even if we are to make some changes overall to the, to the plans, that wouldn't necessarily be what's reflected even in the plans that are being worked on right now. And I, I said that to them. I said, don't, don't think you have to change your whole process because they're kind of midstream with the process. But to start, there might be some small changes to start making immediately for what will be presented in the, you know, in, in the end of the year for next year's school improvement plans, but certainly some larger changes. And one of the things that we did as, as a team sort of distinct from this process, so that like I'm saying, this process was already going, but one thing that we did was we just talked about looking at the other schools' plans and what did you like, what could you borrow, what could you, you know, change in your plan? So there's, there's a lot of work going on. I think that you might see some, some more substantial differences in what comes out next year, the year after as well. It's part of, it's part of one of my educator goals as, as I discussed at a previous meeting. But what you have here before you are the, the mid-year updates on their current school improvement plans. And it's a pretty comprehensive report from all of the five schools.
Okay. Any discussion? Comments, questions on school improvement plans?
The middle school had quite, I love the graphs. Sometimes it's just easier to see with the graph than, you know, 29% or 89%, so. That was quite impressive.
I can see a lot of the administrators.
Don't meet her.
On those visuals as well.
You want, you want to take it, Scott?
Well, I, I will, I will just say, this is a continuation of the improvement plans that were presented the last time. And so I think a lot of the comments will be similar and I don't think we have to hark on them, but I think as a school committee, it's, it's, it's good to see numbers sometimes. I know there are, are gaps that we're trying to address and I think at elementary, it's hard to get those numbers and I think they do a good job of trying to get that. I think at the middle school, they do a very good job. I think the high school doesn't always have the numbers in there and I think that's something that I pointed out the last time when the school improvement plans were there and it's still lacking in here. But, you know, overall, I mean, I think focusing on the positive, it's good to see a lot of the good work that is being done. And I think in general, I think we all believe we have a really good school district here. We have very good schools here. We're winning national awards and so, you know, it doesn't mean that you don't continue to try to improve. You know, I think we, I think it's great that everybody focuses on always trying to improve. I would love to see in the new ones, a little bit more consistency. I, I, I think we, I, we all love that every elementary school is a little bit different, you know, so I don't think it should just be like, this is exactly what it has to be. Correct. But, but at the same time, like, you know, should it be just a vague goal or should it be like a numbers-driven goal? And I think, you know, you see all over the place on, on, on the spectrum here. And so I think in general, they're, they're pretty good. I think, you know, I, I'd just like to see, especially the high school, maybe a little bit more specific data and, you know, and things, and things within the control, you know? I mean, when the first one to advocate for more, you know, more staff, like, and I think that should be the, the first goal that you have when you're trying to improve, self-improve, so.
Yeah. No, I, I, I agree. And, and I think what you said, Patrick, aligning them with district goals and district plans is, is, and, and as you say, the administrator's own goals is, is critical to really get the true value out of this process because it, it's really just part of the planning process that, that North Reading has done so well over the last, you know, 10 years or so or, or a little longer. And, and so I agree that there's definitely room to, to improve that alignment, I guess.
And I also like in the middle school and they're, when everything's not like we've met all of them, when they actually show, you know, a couple of these aren't going, you know, there's some things that are actually,
Yeah.
you know, a little bit worse than they were before and, you know, we're not really there yet. And, you know, and I, I see absolutely nothing wrong with like, if you don't set goals that are high enough, you're, you're always going to hit them. And I don't think that it's good to just say, I can check off every box. Like, I think this committee overall has appreciated when people take big swings at things and that means occasionally you're not going to hit them, at least not in one year. And so, and, and I think it's good to not always hide that either. Like, I, I like seeing this is an area we're still focusing on because we're still struggling here, so.
I will say with the high school too, there's a lot of layers there. So these are sort of the big goals that are at the school level and then each department has goals under that. So we're not getting all that in this presentation. But I think that said, I think the goals should be prominent. One thing I've said to them today is, it's a school improvement plan. One of the elementary goals on page 34, right? So I just said, you know, even if it's just an overview, that should probably be much higher. So things like that, just to, you know, when you're looking at a snapshot, I think there's a lot of things that are in there that are important and I, I'm not at a point yet to say what I think even should change, never mind what other stakeholders think should change. But I think that's one that is safe to say, like, you know, you should be able to quickly in a snapshot say, here are the goals, here's how we're doing on them at a, at a quick look. So we're really going to look at, and these are the conversations that we're having at the administrative council level and where we're talking about, you know, that exact piece of not trying to make a cookie cutter, but borrowing from each other, what do we like? I mean, everyone picks up on the visuals, the colors, like, there, there's things there that, that are very, that are very attractive to see. And just really, what is a goal statement and, and what is continuous improvement? And should it look different now than it looked a few years ago? And I think everyone's open to, to some different ideas and some change, but again, I, I you know, I just want to be clear that what comes forward in the next cycle for them, because they're already in process with their councils.
Right.
To change it drastically would be premature, right? So we're gonna.
That's fair. So don't expect a big, a big change in, in June when we get these presented.
Well, we might see some smaller pieces that you'll see are now more aligned to some of the new accountability measures, lowest 25% and those kind of things. We might start to see that popping up more with some, some more fixed ideas. And then I think as this cycle now goes into next summer where we build this out at the district level and then we see that filter then into those new plans, I think we're going to see some changes. So it's going to take a year and a half maybe to get to some real differences. But, but I do think, you know, this accountability piece where you're checking in mid-year, I think makes a lot of sense as well, so.
And it, it, the only other comment I have kind of relates to the search for the superintendent and then the evaluation with the superintendent. A couple of things. Number one is, I think improving a district that is struggling to get them to average or average to good, you know, sometimes small things can make big changes. And so when you already have a pretty good district, I think it's hard. And, and we understand that like, it, it might take three years to make a small change. And, and that's perfectly fine because, you know, going from good to great takes a lot. And then the second comment would just be like, we, we brought up the last meeting, like, one of my concerns is, I think with the superintendent evaluation, we were trying to focus down on what are the really key things and not just put 20 different objectives out there. If there really should be four to six objectives, like, I don't think it's bad to have four to six objectives and really focus on that. Because I feel like, I feel like to get to 15 or 20 objectives in some of these schools, you're, it's hard. I mean, like, there's not that many things that you want to be changing and, and like I said, some of those small things will take a lot of time to do. And so I just think overall focusing on smaller numbers and just really doing them well and really making sure you're identifying the right objectives is better than being on the list, 20 things that you accomplished in a year.
I, I agree. I had a very conversation today about which things we could cut if we had to kind of, so those are the kind of conversations we're going to have. And but honestly, we did it a little bit with the school committee goals this summer. I think we'll, we'll continue to do that because I, I agree. All the research is around focus, focus. And, and, you know, with my goals, I didn't want to come in too low and make it look like I wasn't doing as much as other people, but I think, I think that, that general idea is, you know, focus on something smaller and do it really well and take some risks with it, right? So have something that might be a little bit higher, but we're able to focus on it so we hit that higher bar as opposed to having a lot of low-hanging fruit kind of.
Yeah.
So I, I think, I think there's some pieces here that are very good and can be worked into those kind of goals. And then there's others that maybe we've met them and we can move, we can move in a different direction, so. But I think, again, I'm proud of this document even as is. Like you said, it's good to create. There's a lot of great things happening. This document captures a lot of those things at each school. And, you know, I, I like to thank the principals and, and the school councils and all the time that they spend putting into these documents that are very comprehensive. And, and, you know, I think when you're new to the community and new to the school and you can click on these documents and read them and, and learn about the school and, and see that there are goals. There's districts that have clicked, clicked and looked and they don't have goals or the goals are like, you know, to paint the halls or something. You know, it's like, it's not even about academics. I think these are certainly focused on what we believe in at our core. But is there room for improvement with this like there is for everything else? I think there is, so.
Okay. Any other comments? No vote needed on that. Thank you, Dr. Daly. The school committee goals for 2019, 2020. Do you present on that or?
I'm just going to share what I presented here. This is a little bit early in the process, but I, I think around this time in, in the past years, you folks have had a conversation around mid-year. And so what I prepared here was similar to what Superintendent Bernard had prepared in the past. I tried to do justice to his work. So the first page, what I did is I took the goals for 2019, 20 and I just highlighted in sort of the pink places where I thought might be worth noting that we've, we've either met or we've done substantial work in those areas. So I thought there in the first that there's been a lot of work with, you know, the fall was very heavy with a lot of policy work that was done. And new policies approved. Although some were shared with me tonight, we might have to meet to go over a few other changes, but there are some things there. Certainly updating and supporting the, the district plan in NRPS 2021. Implementing the new evaluation tool on page two. The school committee participating in professional development. I know that several of us went to a drive-in session this year. Ms. Bowwell and I presented, co-presented at, at MAS C this year, which I think is in some ways professional development. When you have to give a presentation, I thought that was a great experience as well. And I think, you know, maybe there's more to come, but I think those are noteworthy. That's why I highlighted in there. I thought those are some great things that we did. The NRPS 21, 2021 annual report. I know that that's been shared out with you this year, earlier this year by Superintendent Bernard. On the next page, the LED and the solar powered lighting. I, I know, I want to thank Mr. Connolly for his great work there. Certainly the opportunity is explored. I think we're still getting more information to present for consideration, but it's been presented for consideration at some subgroups at this time and, and, and Mr. Connolly's done quite a bit of work on that and, as well as our, our subcommittee work. You know, the collaboration, the attendance of participation, all of our regularly scheduled meetings, finance planning and, and select board meetings and, you know, even the, even the work we did tonight with the turkey farm piece is just certainly more evidence there. On the next page, the legislative advocacy and things that have been discussed at these school committee meetings. The reliable data for curriculum instruction. I know that I was able to present some things as assistant superintendent in the fall. And we continue to have reliable data there. We've expanded our STEAM programs through the support for our middle school positions this year and as well as the foreign language, world languages at the middle school. Those two are, are connected and they're certainly connected through a continuation of that program for next year as those programs expand. If, if you remember, those were half-year courses introduced in sixth grade. We now need the second half of that course as part of the, the expansion into seventh grade for next year. Supporting those initiatives to address social emotional learning for students. And there's been a lot of support from the school committee and we've done some great work with our subcommittee and our social emotional learning group that Cynthia Conant's led. I had a great meeting with Kathy O'Connell and Cynthia Conant today about how we're going to expand that and continue that sort of a five-year plan of how we're going to expand the great work we've done this year with our committee to now reach all of our teachers and, and staff in the next, next five years. Social media use has expanded. I think there's been a lot of sharing of the budget process. I think Michael's videos continue to be sort of groundbreaking. I know that they get tweeted and retweeted and shared by not just North Reading, but even other districts, sort of a, you know, hey, why can't we do this, right? I've seen some of that out there and I think it's, it's great. I think you've already made at least one video already.
I made one.
Yeah, so.
Have you gone viral yet?
Yeah.
Viral's relative in North Reading.
I think it's.
Twenty people, it's viral.
It's a great model. I've made videos as well in the past for, for things that I've done as assistant superintendent. And I think as superintendent, that's something that I, I see us doing video. I think videos, small digestible videos, you know, three to four minutes, people watch those and, and sometimes you can say almost as much as you can in 20 pages that no one will read when they might click on something. I think that's the culture we're in now, so that's something we're going to continue to explore. You've supported us in, in updating our, our app and our, our district website. I think we've done a nice job of celebrating the achievements. We've brought a lot of folks here, certainly gifts and donations, but also some other great achievements from the blue ribbon ceremony to other pieces that are here. I think that's certainly ongoing, but we've done a, I think there's some, certainly some pieces to point to so far in the district. And, you know, those, you know, celebrating those robust partnerships, having our vocational representatives here tonight. I was able to highlight that one. It happened tonight. And, you know, even our, you know, having these mid-year progress in of itself, sort of a meta-goal here, but I highlighted it as we're doing it tonight. I think when you talk about accountability, I think it's important to have some mid-year check-ins and I think that's what this process is. So I shared those highlight documents with you. I shared the, I went back to see what was done in the past. Around this time, we shared out a, a self-assessment document that you would then complete and bring to the April school meeting. And I shared, after that self-assessment document, I shared sort of the composite documents from the past year. So this is now updated to reflect the 2018, 19 school committee goals and the average rating for your self-evaluations from 18, 19, 17, 18 and 16, 17. So I have suggested that to the edeval subcommittee for yourselves that there may be need to, perhaps you might comment now or, or make suggestions, but my suggestion through this document was that folks would take it, make some comments on here, bring it to the April 13th meeting and then that might allow you some time to, to pull those, that information together to share out at a, at a meeting after the 13th. So that was similar timeline to what was done last year.
Right. So we're supposed to be filling out the assessment or just working on the assessment tool?
I think you would use the assessment tool and complete that and bring it.
We're filling it out. We're filling out the metrics.
I believe, I believe that's how it would, would have been done. And then, and then from there, the, the subcommittee is able to composite and.
Can you guys email it out then?
I can certainly.
The last, the last few years, we've, we've been able to do that because.
Yeah, the, 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 not just a PDF, but the, but the.
The one, the fillable, yeah.
Yeah, fillable. Sure. Absolutely. Yep.
You won't, you won't read my writing.
And, and, you know, we can, we can discuss now or you mentioned that completed by a certain, a particular meeting date in April. Is that what we did last year or did we just say get it to one of us and we'll
By a certain date.
Present by whatever the day we're actually doing the presentation. I think that's probably, you know, we certainly don't think we need an agenda item for a meeting saying, have you, have we all, you know, hand in our, hand in our forms, but so we, we should probably set a date that is towards the end of April and then do the final presentation.
Sure.
Whatever the, similar meeting that we did last year and I guess it probably was May, wasn't it?
Yeah, my, I, I was having a little challenge trying to, it was on the agenda about four times last spring and this was the closest meeting to that, so I just used those dates, but in trying to. But in trying to keep it the same, I, I did that, but it seemed to me like maybe it was in there more than it needed to be. So I, I, I would say whatever, whatever works for you, folks, that we can certainly do.
I feel like it was presented after the election though, usually. I don't know. I mean, it probably shouldn't be. Probably should be presented before.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry too much about, I mean, we can certainly discuss that if you want. It doesn't seem that important. But, but it, we've got a lot of stuff going on in April with budgets and, and everything else. So, you know. Feels like a presentation in May is probably not a bad thing.
Yeah. I think this was just to bring the data and then we would do the presentation. So we can, we can do that. We can change that piece if we need to on this form when I shared electronically.
I trust the subcommittee to decide when we have to do it. I think overall, I think we've.
Let's schedule three meetings, talk about it, Chris.
Yeah. Overall, I think we've done pretty well. And a lot of the ones that haven't been hit yet are, are budget related as well until that season is starting.
And we also have some work to do on this whole process, which we'll also do more of in the summer, I hope.
Focus on just a few.
Focus on a few. No more goals of continue to do what we're already.
There you go. Okay. I think we're done with that. And then on to routine matters. This is once out of minutes. Mrs. Imbriano, are we okay? Did you review them for us? No, I'm just saying, is there any?
I didn't see.
Are there any issues? Okay. Can I have a motion then to approve the January 27th minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the January 27th, 2020 open session meeting as written.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Nice job, Cindy. Budget update, none at this time? Staffing, none at this time?
None at this time.
Bids and donations?
Bids and donations. Oh, there they are. By the way, I appreciate the electronic copy of the meeting notes. Although I'm still, now I'm, now I'm like paging back and forth between the agenda and the actual, I'll have to figure that one out, but. Mr. Chairman, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $440 from the J. Turner Hood Parents Association to be used towards a staff workshop for Heidi Hogan and Paula Crosby at the Hood School.
I second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from the J. Turner Hood Parents Association to be used towards the grade five field trip to Kimball Farms at the Hood School. Kimball Farms is at the Hood School?
I second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $6,900 from the E. Ethel Little School PTO to fund the purchase of 30 HP Chromebooks and applicable licensing at the Little School.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Eventually. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $2,714.21 from North Reading Public Schools' staff members, community members, and Friends of John Bernard to fund the John Bernard Scholarship to be awarded to future high school graduates of North Reading.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous.
And a quick question. Have we agreed to send out or have we sent out an invitation to the Griffiths in return for their $5,000 donation from?
So we did. So they, they kind of declined to come forward, but they.
Still appreciate it.
Yeah, we still appreciate it.
Great.
The gesture.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Subcommittee update. Finance planning team out on January 31st. I or Mrs. Imbriano will give an update. Mrs. Imbriano?
I left my notes at home.
I didn't take notes, so.
Well, they, they went over just the revenue plan as general. And they're still a little bit conservative. I don't think that they think it's gonna be a slam dunk and everything with having a whole bunch of extra money as, as always at this time of year. We did talk about the turkey farm and there's something else that I'm gonna have to look at the agenda.
And revenue, we're being conservative, but it's, there's some negative things out there too, like the health insurance might be more than.
Yes.
More than we want it to be. Last year was a very good rate. This year might be.
Right.
Much worse.
We did present our LED and, and solar proposals or initiatives. And I think we had consensus to continue to, to move that conversation forward and formally kind of go out and request some formal proposals and submit some RFPs to get some, some concrete data in.
Okay. Thank you. And CIPC?
We usually don't report on that every time, but do you want us to start doing that?
I don't know. Where are we at? How about just where are we at? Where are we at? I mean, it's like, have all the presentations been made?
So there's still, I think the big presentation is Wednesday, which is the road program. The, the public works facilities department has made their requests this, that passed Wednesday. So it focused on, you know, the town buildings and facility requests. So I think there's one or two more department presentations. And then there's the field trips, which will, the field trip, which will take place early March. And then the, the ranking, the rankings will begin and those deliberations of, of what can we afford and, and what the priorities are. And the ranking list will be turned in. And then I think in the mid-April, April 13th meeting was the targeted select board presentation for their approval. That's kind of where we stand.
Very good. Thank you. And budget and finance subcommittee met before this meeting? You want an update on that one?
Um, sure. We, we talked about the preliminary draft budget and what level services looked like and what we would potentially go in with. And I think we also talked a little bit about full-day kindergarten. And, you know, Scott and I viewed our, you know, points there. And whether or not we do anything is not currently in our plans for NRPS. But we, we still want to think about that as we move forward. So just a matter of going through the process.
I think we're in favor of keeping kindergarten, just to be clear.
Excellent.
But just to try to maybe, I mean, I, I will say I've had more and more comments lately about the cost. And I think when the trend is going away from, you know, having to pay for full-day kindergarten at all. And, you know, as more and more schools offer full-day kindergarten for free, we become higher and higher on the list of the most expensive ones in the state. And so I think when we're talking about budget, we should at least have a discussion about it.
Well, I have a philosophical question or maybe it's a process question, which is like the complete opposite, but.
It's one of the two.
Do we feel like we can ever achieve full-day kindergarten in the budget? In the budget, in the annual budget process?
Maybe over time.
Or is it? Or is it something where we need a plan to do a different process? That's, I guess that's my question, whether it be building consensus in the town and doing, I mean, I don't know. What's. If, if we, if we don't think we can get there through the budget, then we got to come up with something else.
I think it's certainly something that we'll continue to talk about. I think it's a multi-phase possibly multi, you know. I, I think the towns where I've seen this work well, especially with, with the, the way the grants are written and, and things that, you know, there's some misconception out there that, you know, funds are available that we're just not accessing. We've exercised that. It's probably been a couple of years, but I know Michael's done quite a bit of research on that in the past as well. But I would say that, you know, the districts that have done this well have come up with some different options that are researched and kind of presented to the committee. Think about phasing things out, what it would cost option A, B, C to do sort of, you know, one, one time, some, some other pieces as well. So, I mean, these are things that we certainly, I've heard as well. I talked about them as I interviewed. I think it's something that I believe in. I think honestly, it's an equity issue. I, I really see this as, as something to, to move forward with, but it's not something that's easily done overnight. And I think there's a substantial cost to it. And I think, Michael might be able to.
Yeah, I think that's right. I mean, I think the biggest, you know, challenge for North Reading is that some of the area communities that have been able to, to move towards free full-day kindergarten over the last, you know, maybe three to four years. They, they got some additional state aid by making that substantial change. Whereas, you know, North Reading was still in that, our status hasn't changed. We looked into this pretty substantially three or four years ago. And then where we stand in the eyes of the chapter 70 formula and the state aid formula, you know, moving towards that type of a change would not result in any significant additional state aid to North Reading. So we, we don't, that doesn't change. So we are, it, it brings us to a point where it's gonna be, you know, needing to be funded kind of, you know, by the community, you know, with our budget and, and kind of putting our heads together but to, to view those options. But at this point, we would not, we can't rely on additional state aid by making that type of a change. I know, I don't see that changing even with something like the Student Opportunities Act that, that got enacted. So we, so we kind of know that. And that's, you know, I know it's confusing to some to understand, you know, why does the community just, just next door, you know, have an influx of some, some revenue whereas, you know, North Reading doesn't. And, you know, there's, there's a variety of answers to that question. And, and, you know, chapter 70 formula is ultimately not a one-size-fits-all, you know, based on where districts are. You know, and where they stand with relation of their, their target aid that the, that the formula is trying to bring districts towards is going to impact when major changes occur, what, what revenue they, they receive. So, so we do know that answer and, and we do know that it's a substantial cost based on what we've relied on from a revenue standpoint to directly offset the full-day kindergarten program. But, you know, I think there's options we can pursue and we've had those conversations and we're starting to, to have those again as we approach the FY '21, you know, budget process.
Yes. And just to clarify, I'm not disagreeing with what Mr. Connolly's saying, but I'm going to talk about Student Opportunity Act in a moment. I, I think as currently written, we would not get.
Right.
Anything there. But I think there's some possible entry points and certain discussion points. I think it's, it's certainly something that a district like North Reading needs where we didn't benefit from Student Opportunity Act the way other districts did. This might be an entry point for some matching funds or some state grants that I would hope we qualify for. Some preliminary questions that I've asked said that we may qualify. It's not gonna solve the problem, but it might chip away at it. And I think, I think it's also, you know, I'll say at least at this point, start, you know, 30 or so days in that, that just the fact that we don't qualify and we might, this is hard. It's not easy, but that doesn't mean we, we're not gonna explore it. Because I think, I think if it comes down to being an equity issue and it's the right thing to do, then I think we eventually come up with some plans and, and ultimately put it maybe in the hands of, of the town and the voters to say, is this something that is worth finding the right resources to do if it's an equity issue? But to solve that overnight isn't always the best approach either. So I think it's very important to continue to talk about this because I think it's out there and we should be thinking about it moving forward.
So I just want to be clear. I absolutely agree that it was not gonna be solved overnight.
Absolutely. Yep. I know that's clear.
Yep. But, and, and again, we'll, we'll have a lot of discussions about this. Like, do we wait for a plan to start anything or do we try to chip away a little bit this year? I mean, to me, I'm bringing it up more because ironically, I feel like when more people are doing it, the equity becomes a bigger issue. Because then I feel like peak children are more singled out now when, when half the, when half the students were in full day and half that were in half day. I don't think it's singled out as much as when almost everybody's in full day or most people are in full day. And so, you know, and also, I mean, I just think, I don't think we should ever sacrifice class size. But, you know, if, if we do get new revenues and, you know, talking about that. And I've also been in school committee meetings years ago when they were instituting new fees, when they were raising fees. And it was always, we hate to do this, we hate to do this, we hate to do this. But then it's like never even discussed about, you know, I, I just want to make sure that if we end, even if we end up staying exactly where we are, that we at least have a discussion about it to make sure.
In other words, yeah. Can we lower it $50 or $100 or anything?
And so, just to see. So, but in any event, much more to come on budget, so. Subcommittee schedule. Substance Abuse Coalition is February 25th at the North Reading Police Station. Athletics Subcommittee, February 26th at 12:30 PM in the superintendent's conference room. Fine Art Subcommittee, February 26th to 30 PM in the superintendent's conference room. NORcam Board of Directors, February 27th at 7:00 PM in the NORcam office. And Finance Planning Team meeting is March 5th at 8:15 AM in the superintendent's conference room. Administrative report, Dr. Daley?
Thank you so much. So I'll share these around. Thank you. Guess I should share this as well. We've got some extras.
Thank you.
Enjoy. So the first item on there is, as I mentioned, the Student Opportunity Act. So I just wanted to share out that, as I mentioned before, we are among around 50%, 57% of the districts who are held harmless and will not be receiving additional funds as a part of the Student Opportunity Act. So essentially, we've seen a trend towards around this number of 69, 600, it's about what we would be getting had there been no changes to the Student Opportunity Act. But we are still required to develop a plan about how we're gonna spend the additional funds. And so the, the state has, has come up with what they're calling the short form. So it's certainly not as comprehensive as districts that are receiving more than, I believe it's 1.5 million is, is doing the long form. And we are required to also engage stakeholders as we develop a plan about how to spend the additional monies that we're actually not receiving. So it's kind of an interesting predicament to be in. But I, I think the idea here though is we can still talk about how we're spending our funds. It's a good conversation. I, I will have this conversation with, with some of our union leaders and certainly our principals. These are the four commitments that we're required to make. So intentionally focusing on student subgroups who are not achieving at the same high levels. Adopting or deepening or continuing specific evidence-based programs to close opportunity and achievement gaps. So again, in a situation where we're not really receiving additional funds and what we've planned on in the, in the revenue plan, those continuations and deepenings is where we're going to be. Monitoring success and reducing disparities in achievement among student subgroups over three years with a small number of metrics and targets. And engaging families, particularly those families representing student subgroups most in need of support about how to best meet their student needs. So there, there are some areas that, that I'm looking to explore that they have some recommended high priority areas. One of those areas is expanding pre-K and, and to address equity issues. And so I raised the question at the, at the conference a few times. I've asked this question. So districts that don't have equity in kindergarten, would that also be a priority area? Because it seems like you'd want to do that before you start addressing the pre-K. And they said, absolutely. If you're still in that situation, that could be an area to deepen and to focus. And so as I mentioned before, there may be some matching funds or some other things out there. So there's some possibilities that I'm going to explore with that piece. So there will be a plan that we will develop and my plan is to present that to you at the March 23rd meeting date for a vote. That, that plan would need to be voted. And I have to submit the plan for April 1st, 2020. So we essentially have all the documents for the plan, but the actual electronic form that I need to complete will be coming out in March. And I will be able to present all that to you in March 23rd. I'm not sure if there's any questions or, this is more informational. I want to do a Bravo shout-out to the cast and crew of Rock of Ages. I was able to take my children to the show. It was wonderful production as always. I want to thank Miss Carla Lister and the Friends of Hornets Productions and just everyone involved. It was, it was a fantastic show. My kids loved it. I was able to recognize just about every song. It was really kind of my era too. Kind of going through the late 80s, early 90s. There was some great, great stuff. So.
Did anybody else go?
I went on Friday night.
I'm, I'm gonna be in big trouble with Carla because I didn't go.
No? I mean, I, I will say, it was, I think it sold out both nights. It was hard to get in. And one, one thing I always like about those is they're very inclusive. There's so many students that participate. And, you know, you're getting, you, you see students that have special needs that are included in there. And, you know, I mean, I think my only complaint about Friday night was the audience kind of stunk because they wanted us to get up and we weren't really getting up well enough. Like they should have, they had, they had the notorious group up in the back corner. They should have put them right in the middle because that would have got everybody up. They were up the whole time at the end. But that was a great performance, so.
It really was. And the, yeah, the talent is unbelievable all around.
And also I would note, seeing so much staff there too. There were so many staff members, teachers, paras that were there to support the kids as well. And so that's, that's another nice thing about it when you go and you see like, I mean, I sat right, right by Mrs. O'Connell as well. She was like right in front of me, so.
Yeah, it was a great. Yeah, it was a great, great program. I shared with you the timeline for the North Reading High School Assistant Principal Search. So I thought I'd take a moment just to thank Mr. Joseph Haines, who's done a fantastic job with our students and staff this year. It's a challenging role, very, very important role. And I've, I've spent time speaking with Mr. LaPrette as recently as this week, just about how important it is for us to find that right fit for North Reading moving forward. And he's got a very comprehensive and inclusive process here involving many stakeholders. It's, it's a really comprehensive and important timeline to start. We were able to post this this morning because we want to get that, that really, that head start, cream of the crop, kind of with the candidates that are out there, and start to get interest for the position in North Reading. And I think we're very optimistic that we're going to find someone who's, you know, has some experience, but is committed to North Reading sort of for the long haul. We really want someone that, that will grow with us here. So we're excited about that opportunity.
Have, have we done this a, a couple of years now, and we just haven't found the right person yet? And what's, what's the history of this? I mean, because I know Mr. Haines been, been, uh, filling in for us for-
Sure.
Is this his second year now?
It is. Yep, we, we, you know, so we had, uh, when Mr. Downs left, it was, it was very late in the, in the season. It was right, right before school started, and we were able to get Mr. Haines to come in to kind of fill that piece. He's retired, and so he was able to continue with us. Really built up a, a strong partnership with Mr. LaPrette. We did look last year, and out of all the candidates, Mr. Haines was sort of the, the most qualified and best person, given a variety of factors. Not only was he qualified, but also just the, the continuity and the stability of the position moving forward. But at this time, it's, you know, to get it, to honestly, to get a waiver for someone that's, that's in that position, it's, it's challenging. And, and so we really felt that getting this second waiver that got him this, this year was, was a good effort that we, that we were able to do last June. But to get us forward, we, we're ready to, to now do a full search. Essentially, in order to qualify for the waiver, you have to demonstrate that there is, is not the qualified licensed candidate who's not retired. And so at this point, there's, there's just a lot of, and we're hoping through the search, we're going to find quite a bit of candidates who are, who are highly qualified for the position.
Is there anything negative about North Reading in particular that would make people not want to do it, or is it just a, it's just a lack of good candidates out there?
I, I don't, I don't think so, no. I think, I think it's very attractive. The, you know, this, I think the salary's competitive. We just, you know, the new salary for, we sort of settled the contract moving forward. I think the, the posted rates are very competitive. I think it's a, a great position. I, I just think that first year, we were sort of in that transition, and it wasn't there. And I think last year, you know, I, I think we had some good candidates, some qualified people. They may apply again. But I think we were just well-positioned to continue with that stability. I mean, when staff have to go through a transition every couple of years, sometimes, you know, we did it with our Director of PPS a few years ago with, with Ms. Artie Flynn. To have that, you know, to have someone in a position for a couple of years, even as an interim, is, is not a bad thing, because it kind of provides that solid transition. When you're kind of changing every year, it's, it's confusing. So I think we felt it was best to continue for this year, but I think for, for everyone involved, it was, it's the right time to move on. So, as I said, Mr. Haines done a fantastic job getting to know kids, getting to know parents. He's out there greeting the kids every morning as they come in, and he's done a really great job. And I think, I think we have a great plan for the next person.
There's a, there's a former principal and superintendent I know that knows a lot of the kids here that is looking for, is, is retired now, too, so. Just saying, if they need a-
Another waiver?
Another, another one year, you know?
Yeah. That would be full circle, yeah. And finally, this is an item that came across my desk this morning, but I was able to put it on here. On Monday, May 11th, 2020, the LD Bachelor School will be recognized as a 2019 School of Recognition. The E. Ethel Little School will be recognized as a 2019 National Blue Ribbon School. It's an evening presentation. This was done at the State House last year in the morning. This presentation is in Worcester in the evening. And so it would conflict with our May 11th School Committee meeting, which is currently at the Little School. So there would be a number of people that would have a conflict. And this is a, a ceremony that I do think that we should attend and participate in. It's a, it's a very well-deserved recognition for the Bachelor as well as for the Little School. And so I'm just suggesting that we possibly reschedule that meeting, possibly to May 18th. I'm not sure the process, whether we discuss that here, or we set it, date it some other time and, and vote to change in next time, so.
I think we, I mean, I might have to move a trip, but that, that, that'll be an important meeting, because I think that's the reorganization meeting.
Reorg meeting, yeah.
Because I may, may not be there with you. Maybe Mr.-
Whether you are or not.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Blank will be there, so I won't-
Whether you are or not, the reorg happens, so.
I know. So, yeah. But I, I, again, I think that's the next Monday, and so I think we, the only other question would be if we would cancel the meeting, but if we have the presentation for the Little School, I think we don't, we have a lot going on. We probably can't. So, yeah, I think May 18th-
Yeah.
Probably works. Because I don't think we can move it up because of the election before.
I, I think that's right.
But, yeah.
I mean, I mean, we can move it wherever we want.
Yeah. But you can't do the reorg then as well, and-
You have to do the reorg at the next, whatever the next meeting is, so I-
Yeah.
The 18th would be the best option, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so do we, maybe put a motion out the next time?
Yeah, that's my thought. This was more informational, and we can, we can put something out for the future, so.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you very much.
You might want to pencil that in the calendars, that the-
Okay.
11th is a conflict.
Perfect. Um, just looking before. We already have one on May 4th, it looks like, already, don't we?
Uh, second, maybe?
Yeah, May 4th, we already have one, so we, we couldn't go up, like, up either.
Right.
We have one on May 4th already, so. Okay. No correspondence either? Future business? Uh, March 2nd, we have a school committee meeting back here at 6:30 PM. March 23rd, we have a school committee meeting back here as well at 6:30 PM. Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. Second?
All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
I'm indifferent.